Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals on this night of December, yeah, almost, November 15th. The City of Peabody Zoning Board of Appeals meets this evening in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 40A and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The secretary, which tonight will be Ms. Picardi, will read the legal notice or state that such a notice has been waived. All applications will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office or as otherwise designated by the chair. We are going to go a little out of order tonight, but not any big deal. The petition or petitioner's representative will present the subject application to the board. That means when it's your turn, you, your lawyer, or your builder will come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and tell us why you're here, what you want to build, and the reasons for that. The chair may limit the length of all remarks. All parties at an interest will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition to a pending application, and the board may receive similar written communications to be placed on the public record. The petitioner will then be given the opportunity to refute any such remarks, which would be mostly in opposition if that's the case. The decision will be typed and filed with the city clerk, Ms. McGrath. Once the decision is filed with the city clerk, you have a 20-day appeal period. Any questions on that? She notifies you the following day and will answer all your questions. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded by our clerk. When you are at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone, and please only speak when you are at the podium to ensure that you are on the record. Before we begin, we need to, I need a motion to accept the correspondence from October 19th and from Captain Dowling, the fire memo, and from October 26th, the extension memo from Attorney Panos.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that is accepted. Now, we are going a little out of order. We have, our secretary, De'Nsenzaba, is sick and he's absent this evening. So that being the case, he needed to be here to hear our special meeting continuation of 40 to 42 Endicott Street. Because he is not here, we cannot hear 40 to 42 Endicott Street this evening. And Mr. Panos, I would think that it's your time to get to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jason Panos. For the record, I'm an attorney practicing law at 246 Andover Street, and we're one person down on the board, so therefore I'd like to request a continuance for your next hearing in December, and I'm wondering if we could set that date tonight.
December 20th.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think that's it?
Yeah.
Motion to accept the continuance.
In favor? Any opposed? We'll see you. 40 to 42 Endicott Street, for those of you listening at home, or anyone that is here this evening, I'm sorry, but we will then hear that again on December 20th. I also have an elected official in the audience, Councilor Ward Four, Ed Charis. He would like to speak this evening. I am going to give him the opportunity right now to speak, if you'd like to. Councilor Charis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to honorable committee members and the clerk. My name is Edward Charis. I am the Ward Four Counselor here in Peabody. I reside at 7 Columbus Road. I am also here as a resident and follower of the ZBA meetings, and I'm just here to give 100% support to this board. This board is an elected board, volunteers, receive no pay, no benefits, and tries to do their very best on each and every applicant. I strongly feel that this board has been mistreated and not giving the respect that they deserve from elected officials, which is sadly. We would never allow the behavior at a city council meeting that's happened here at this board. The residents out there should be very pleased to know the caliber of these individuals. And again, to me, it is appalling that some of the things that's been happening here at this board, and it's a slippery slope that we go down when we allow things like this to happen, and we have so many different boards in this city that will be attacked and bullied. It's very, very dangerous. So what it's worth to you members, you have my 100% support. I may not always agree with your decisions, but I'm sure you don't agree with my decisions and my votes that I make. I've always pledged that I would be respectful and thankful for the work you folks do. My time will be coming to an end soon, but that support and respect will still continue. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words. We are now going to go to number one, which is...
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Move to receive the correspondence from Kelti, Attorney Kelti, requesting that Item One on the agenda be moved till the December 20th meeting of 2021. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Number one is continued to December 20th. We are now on to number two, Kevin Baez and Ramona Champa.
Continue.
Good evening, Ramona Champa, 14 Dublin, 50% owner.
Kevin Baez, 14 Dublin Road, 50% owner as well. We are asking for a variance for an addition, additional living space, 18 by 12. On the addition on the back of the house, hardship is a camp and elderly slab. We have no attic space or basement for storage. Second is a variance for a garage. Right side of the house detached garage, 23 by 22, which is 506 square feet, scaled back from the original asking of 864 square feet that we asked for last month.
Okay, so, very pleased with your revised plan. To scale down your garage from 864 square feet to 506 is very much in your favor, and I appreciate that, and I think you did a great job. And I'd like to hear from any other members of the board at this point?
No.
It's a good sign. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition, matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Roll. Julie, Barry, Stephen, Brandon, yes, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Number three. Do we have the people from 30 Tremont Street here this evening? Okay, so, this is a continued application, and we have been trying to get, or Carla, Ms. McGrath, has been trying to get in touch with them to no avail. So we cannot withdraw, we cannot really continue. It's already been continued once. At this point in time, I would like to present to the board that we vote on this. It doesn't look like, obviously, nothing has been done, or revised, or taken any of our considerations into consideration.
Do we have to vote, or can we take no action?
Oh, I think we have to vote.
We have to vote? Okay.
Because it was ridiculously large in a small, little Tremont Street.
Yep.
The same as it always has been, everybody.
Mm-hmm. Make sure.
Okay, let's follow through, guys.
All right, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote.
Having failed to appear, no.
No, I'm sorry, this has been denied, and I'm very sorry that nobody showed up, but that's the way it goes. Number four is Denise Murphy.
Okay, all right. I can't read as fast as Dan. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 15th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., 01960. On the application of Denise Murphy for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended, Section 7.2, as it applies to the premise known as 32 Longview Way, Peabody, Mass., Map 116, Lot 33. Petitioner seeks a variance to build in addition and requires relief to left side yard where 15 feet is required and 8.6 feet is proposed. The property is located in R1A zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed by contacting Carla McGrath, carla.mgrath@peabody-ma.gov, or 978-538-5792 in advance and prior to the public hearing. The agenda for this meeting will be posted on the City of Peabody website, www.pb.d-ma.gov.
Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Okay. I'm Denise Murphy, and I'm the full owner of 32 Longview Way, and I'm, do you want me to say everything? Okay. So I'm just looking to expand on an existing deck and enclose it, so I just need a couple more feet. It's eight by eight, and it needs to be 10 by 12. I'm not sure what else you need. Do I turn that off?
Questions by the board? Okay, I think we've all seen this. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none, the matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, you are all set. See?
That was, thank you so much.
That wasn't difficult, was it?
Thank you, I was so nervous.
You're now on to number five. This will be William Pasquale Senior.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on November 15th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., 01960. On the application of William Pasquale Senior and care of Attorney John Kelti for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended, Section 7.2, as it applies to the premise known as 8 Noble Lane, Peabody, Mass., Map 73, Lot 45. Petitioner seeks to subdivide said lot and construct 24 by 24 new dwelling, 24 feet by 24 feet new dwelling. Variants are required on proposed Lot A and Lot B for minimum buildable lot area, minimum frontage, minimum buildable lot width, minimum buildable lot depth. FAR to Lot B, front yard setback to Lot B rear yard to Lot B, right side yard to Lot B. The property is in an R1A zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed by contacting Carla McGrath at carla.mgrath@peabody-ma.gov or 978-538-5792 in advance and prior to the public hearing. The agenda for this meeting and instructions on how to access the remote participation platform are posted on the City of Peabody website.
Thank you, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is John Kelti. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street here in Peabody, Mass., and I appear this evening on behalf of Bill and Doreen Pasquale, who were born and raised in Peabody, both of them, and they currently reside in the property at number six Noble Lane and have resided there since 2010. That house was built in 1991 when the subdivision was first approved by Richard Colosi, who is my client's, Doreen's dad. When Mr. Colosi passed, Doreen and Bill acquired the premises, and they have continued to raise a family there. Currently, the house is occupied by Bill and Doreen, and Michael, and their son, Michael, and his fiancee, Laura. Both are college graduates, both have worked full-time, and both are seeking to get into the housing market. However prices being what they are, it's been extremely difficult for that to happen, even with full-time jobs. They will be married in September of 2022. We're seeking to divide the property from its current 10,000-odd square feet, and we are proposing one lot being 7850 square feet. That'll be referred to as Lot 4A, and a second lot, which would be Lot 4B at the very end of the cul-de-sac, where we would propose to build a 24 by 24 structure. That lot would be 2696 square feet. There is a lot of similar size right at the entry to Noble Lane, which was a variance that I was able to get some years ago when this subdivision was first approved. We did create a lot on the edge of the subdivision. I would point out that there are other lots that are less than 5,000 square feet, both on Endicott Street, further down toward the other end, and that there are lots of this size located over in what is commonly referred to as the east end of the city, over towards, off of Walnut and in the areas up, going towards Treadwell's Ice Cream and the like. We are providing two off-street parking spaces for the proposed structure. We are providing an area of parking for the current structure. As I mentioned earlier, Michael and Laura already lived there, so their cars are already on the premises to allow this additional unit would not result in more cars on the street, but instead would be the same cars that are currently on the street, which are the four cars that are being utilized in conjunction with this household. My clients were able to bring a petition around to their neighbors. Their neighbors all had signed on, to their knowledge, every one of their immediate butters and generally butters in the area are in favor of this subdivision and this variance. We are hopeful that the board will see it in a similar light. Did I provide in the package the, I will give you that material right now, which is, huh? Well, it's, all right, I'll recite who has signed off. It's probably easier to get it into evidence. The neighbors who have signed on are Steve Richard, John Campiano, who lives on the street, Amy Richard, Joanne Campiano, Vasco Borges, who, Vasco Borges, and Heredia Borges, who live immediately adjacent to the premises. The Santos have signed on, and the Sousas have also signed on. So we're happy to say that my clients have reached out to the neighbors, they have showed this plan, and they have shown the design of the house to the neighbors, and we are hopeful that the board will grant this variance this evening, and would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have this evening.
Thank you, Jack. That was a nice presentation. However, this is, this is an extremely small lot, extremely, extremely small lot to build a house on. This goes against quite a few zoning rules. I'm afraid that if this were to go through, this opens the door for anyone to build small dwellings in their backyard or anywhere else. I just think that although it is a great presentation, and it is a necessity, it is too small of a lot, and not enough, not enough land to build a house, considering all the zoning laws that are affected here. And you know, we do have a, and I'll read this in to the record, we do have a correspondence, and I'll read it right now. Dear Chairperson, this correspondence is provided to the ZBA regarding a variance request for a property located at 8 Noble Lane, Peabody, Mass. According to the city records, this property has a land area of 10,546 square feet and is located in an R1A zoning area, which requires 15,000 square feet. Therefore, the property is already non-conforming. The variance request is in essence a request for multiple variances. Lot A and B each require a variance for lot area, minimum frontage, minimum buildable lot width, minimum buildable lot depth. Additionally, FAR to Lot B, front yard setback to Lot B rear yard, and Lot B right side yard to Lot B. The City of Peabody has a well-thought-out set of zoning bylaws. Those bylaws do provide for relief for certain situations. However, I do not believe the intent of providing for variances was to encourage a petitioner to request the ability to create two undersized lots from one undersized lot, and then request a variance from almost every dimensional requirement identified in the zoning bylaws. If that were the case, then we would not need the zoning code. If this variance is granted, it would set a bad precedent, especially due to the multiple variances requested. This request should be denied due to its failure to establish a hardship and lack of concern for the future impact to the city zoning code. Signed, Randolph Blunt. This needs to be accepted into the record?
Motion to accept the correspondence.
All in...
Did, did Mr. Blunt, just out of curiosity, provide an address?
No.
Okay.
Carla, do you have an address?
What I wanted to make about that, if it's appropriate at this time, is that these are not non-conforming lots. They are under current zoning, they are non-conforming. However, at the time that this subdivision was approved, the requirement was 10,000 square feet. So the planning board plan, which was approved, was approved with conforming lots. It's now, we are asking to take that 10,000-plus-square-foot lot and make it smaller, make it into a smaller lot with a companion lot to try to bring the, Michael and his fiancee onboard into the neighborhood.
Comments, questions, concerns?
I, I mean, I share the same concern. It's understandable, it's admirable, it's, I want to do the same thing for my family, but I'm very concerned about whether it was conforming or not, and then becomes unconforming because of the work. I understand what you're saying, Attorney Kelti, but how many lots are there in the city that might be a 10,000-square-foot lot that are conforming based on the old zoning and old planning? And then we do this, and anybody that's on the end of a cul-de-sac, I have family members on the end of cul-de-sacks that share properties, but enough space in between to put probably one or two of these in there, and I start to worry about how that plays out over the course of time. So I just, it's a fantastic idea, great presentation, and it's well-thought-out, it's just, I think the lot is just, just too small of 29 or whatever, it's 2,600 square feet.
And not to interrupt you, but if you remember, board members, we had a similar situation on Forbes Way, where they wanted to divide that, which didn't go through. De' in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Yep, come up to the podium, please, sir.
Hi, my name's Joseph Gagnon. I live at 20 LeBlanc Drive in Peabody, and I'm just here to support their application. It's a nice family, and they're, you know, obviously trying to help their son and future daughter-in-law to, you know, acquire a small house right next to them. This is not the type of subdivision that they're going to subdivide, the lot, build the house, and sell it for profit. They're looking to subdivide, build the house, and have their family member live beside them for many years to come.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Hearing none, the matters before the board. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mike Quinlan. I live at 8 Noble Lane. I'm the son of Doreen Quinlan and William Pasquale. Basically, I just want to emphasize that we're not doing this for any kind of profit. We are planning on staying here for the long run. This is going to be, you know, essential for our future family. We're going to start a family next year. We're going to be planning on having a kid. We're getting married next year, and, you know, we're old here, and hopefully help, help these people, you know, grow old there, too, you know? So it'll, it'll be a, it'll be a really... So it'll be a, it'll be a really, be a really nice time if it gets approved.
Thank you. Anybody else? Now, hearing none, the matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Roll call vote, please.
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote.
Second.
Now, roll call vote.
I share Julie's sentiments, I'm very sorry, but no?
No. Sorry, this motion has been denied. We now have to accept the zoning board rules that we all had in our package, zoning board And we also have to accept the zoning board of appeals dates for 2022. May I have a motion on that, please?
Excuse me. Motion to accept the zoning board rules.
And dates?
And dates.
Can I have a second? Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's approve the minutes for our October meeting, please. Two October meetings. Could we have a motion to accept those minutes?
Excuse me, motion to accept the meeting minutes from our two October meetings.
Favor, any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.